Good evening, and welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting, Monday, March 28, 2016. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I see a scout in the audience. If you could come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We appreciate that. You can stand there too if you'd like to. And then please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Gastineau, Rev. Tabernacle Church on 2226 Jefferson Street.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's counted a high honor to stand in the city council chamber in honor of the Lord, and I want to honor the mayor and all the city council members, every servant of this city. We've got a good city, and we pray for you daily, and I believe the Lord wants to bless our city, and as long as we acknowledge Him, I believe we're going to have His blessing. Thank you again for your service. Lord, we thank you that we can stand in this chamber tonight. We thank you for every servant of this city, from the mayor, Lord, to all those that serve. And we're so thankful that we can pray not only for our city, but we pray for the whole Omaha metro area. I pray for every servant, Lord, every leader. I pray for our police officers, Lord, those that are leading them, our fire personnel, all that serve in those capacities. We pray that you will bless this entire area. Keep your hand up on us. I pray for every school, every business, and just help us to realize how great you are. And we thank you and ask you for these things and give you thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Gastineau, and thank you to Scout's leadership. Thank you. Item number two, Sabrina, please call roll.
Mr. Carmichael.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Yes.
Mr. Modri.
Here.
Mrs. Blood.
Present.
Item 2A, this meeting will be conducted in accordance to the Open Meetings Act posted in the entry to the council chambers. Item three, approval of agenda, consent agenda, minutes and advisory committee reports. 3A, approval of agenda. Councilman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 3B, approval of consent agenda. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Councilman Blood. Any discussion? Mr. Modri.
Yes, Mayor, I move that we remove item number four from the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Councilman Blood.
It's just automatically removed by request.
Thank you. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 3C is under consent. Item number four, approval of claims. Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we move to approve the claims, well, should we have a motion to approve first and then bring it up? Am I bringing it up in discussion?
Sure. Do you like that in a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion?
I move to approve the claims, correct?
The claims, I'm sorry, yes.
Any discussion? Bring that up in discussion, Mr. Modri?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Got a couple of items on the consent agenda, on the claims. I'll get it right here. There's a couple of claims in here for the Cornhusker Hotel, and I understand that's probably for a conference that took place there. Is that correct?
That would have been customer modri in connection with the midwinter conference at the league, yes.
Yes. Has any consideration ever been given to staying at a less expensive hotel even though the conference is at the Cornhusker?
I guess we've stayed there again because the conference is there for being closed for meetings, also for parking. You don't have additional parking costs when you park there as opposed to have parking somewhere else.
Okay. I know I go to many conferences that are at hotels, and rarely do I ever stay at the hotel the conference is at because others are less costly, and I can make up the difference other ways. Another item I have is under legal, 2015 statute books, charge of $64.50. Wouldn't 2015 statutes be a part of just being a legal firm?
I think Sabrina wants to answer that. Sabrina?
Those are the books that the legislature has every year of what was done the past year.
Right.
I have a set of those books. These are actually the books that sit right behind Mr. Sullivan, so that he has easy access to them here in the chambers. Mr. Berlowitz has some, and then Planning has a set.
Okay.
I guess we have them as normal course of business, so we have them available when questions come up to review, not only current code, but any statutory changes to those codes.
All right. All right. You know, just being a law firm, you should have the statutes from the legislature each year.
Just to answer that, I do have mine. I don't order these books back here.
Understand.
Are there any other questions?
No, that's fine.
Thank you. Any further discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number five, special presentations. 5A, proclamation designating March 28 through April 2, 2016, as National Community Development Week. I think Abby is here, and I have the proclamation here. Abby, I'll go ahead and read it from here.
Phil, are you going to take a picture? You want me to come down?
You come down after I read it.
Okay. Proclamation designating March 28, April to April 2, 2016, as National Community Development Week in Bellevue, Nebraska. Whereas the week of March 28 through April 2, 2016, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant CDBG program. And whereas the CDGB program, BG program, provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide decent, safe, and affordable housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low and moderate income people. And whereas the CDBG program has assured increasing importance as an instrument for meeting pressing community development needs in affordable housing, job creation, and retention, human services, capital improvements, and public infrastructure. And whereas over the past five years, our community has received a total of $1,372,193 in CDBG funds to meet the needs of low, moderate income persons in our community. And whereas the city of Bellevue joined the state of Nebraska, the city of Omaha, and the city of Lincoln, as well as other communities, in celebrating Community Development Week in a ceremony on March 28. And that was today. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Bellevue designates the week of March 28 through April 2 as National Community Development Week. Thank you. Abby, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I just want to thank the mayor and the council members for their continued support of our CDBG program. As the mayor said, in the past five years, we've received 1.3 million to use in our community for the specific needs because CDBG does offer us that flexibility. And this being our sixth year, I just look forward to our continued direct support and impact on those lives of the low and moderate income people in our community. Today's celebration or ceremony, we were able to recognize not only the program, but also the partnerships we have with some of our nonprofits in our community. This year, we recognize Rebuilding Together Omaha and their efforts to help us address housing needs for not only elderly, but also disabled members of our community. So if anybody would like more information about that, feel free to contact me. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Abby. I'd like to also give a shout out to Councilman Preister. Today at the celebration, they brought your name up about the South Omaha Neighborhood Alliance, CDBG program, that I believe you were a founding father or founding member of. So that still happens, and they're doing good work down there. So thank you for your continued support and legacy. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Abby.
Thank you.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to commend Abby Highland and our program. Her leadership is second to none across the city, or the state, or the country for that matter. Any city, any community would be envious to have her there running their program. She does a professional job. She holds all of the appropriate hearings, the public input, and does it all in a very professional but personal way. And I've sat in on some of those, and I just want to salute you and our program. You do an excellent job. People in Bellevue can be very proud of the program and of your leadership in making it all happen. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for giving me the opportunity. (applause)
Item 5B, BKDLP, presentation acceptance of the auditor's report and financial statement of the year ended September 30, 2015. Mr. Severson.
I'm Rich Severson, Finance Director, City of Bellevue. We have with us here a representative from BKD, Robin DeVore. She's a partner, CPA for 21 years, been with the firm for 23. They are our auditors, and they have prepared our audit for this year. These are our numbers, but their firm does do the audit, and they do significant work in preparing them and presenting them in generally accepted accounting principles. What you have in front of you and what we've put out on the agenda is the audit, the full version, and the management letter. And again, this year, we received an unqualified audit, which is good. That means they didn't find anything that they needed to qualify it with. And I think there was no fraud, no wrongdoing that they found. They do have some comments, and I'm going to let Ms. DeVore talk about the highs and the lows of this year's audit. And in addition to that, we have had a chance to present this audit and the findings to the audit committee a couple of weeks ago. So, Ms. DeVore.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to visit with you this evening. As Rich indicated, we did spend some time with the auditor. So I'm not understanding. So what is the difference?
When we take a house for permits in Papillion, we're assigned, they tell us, they have a schedule that tells us how much the value of that house is based on square footage and several, and it's figured several different ways. And then the fee is applied. So if you use the same percentage clear across the board, if the house in Papillion is valued less, or the house in Greta is valued less, then the fees, then the fee that we pay for the ASIP fee will be less money out there. And that's currently, I took four houses that I built in the last 12 months. They're all exactly the same house, Omaha, Bellevue, Papillion, and Sarpy County. Based on your proposal, you would have had the highest fee on those four houses. Because I had the actual house, yes.
By how much?
Yeah, only maybe a few hundred dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
(end of transcript)
(inaudible)
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 We met with Rich and his staff and Robin. I will say for me personally, I'm not an accountant, but the discussion we had, I felt very comfortable with the responses that we got back. We discussed the audit reports, financial statements, and I was very satisfied. And I just want to say thanks to Rich and your staff and also to you, Robin, and I'm sure some of your staff too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Any other discussion? A second by Mr. Preister. Any, see no further discussion or questions? Please vote.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Item number six, licor license, there are none. Number seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading. Ordinance number three eight four four. Please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number three eight four four. An ordinance to create a new Article nine in Chapter twenty-eight of the Bellevue Municipal Code relating with streets and sidewalks. To provide for an arterial street improvement program, or ASAP, for street improvements within the city of Bellevue zoning jurisdiction. Provide for special funds for designing and constructing such arterial street improvements. To provide for the management and expenditure of such funds. And to specifically provide for certain fees for new residential, commercial, and industrial construction permits. And to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Sullivan.
I'd sent an email out to council today just advising them. We had met with some developers and they assigned the task of responding to the ordinance to Mr. Follenkamp. Mr. Follenkamp promised to get some information back to me. He did have some issues that prevented him from doing so. We did get that information on Friday. He also, that information wasn't included, but also discussed some issues with how the fee structure was. And so I'd like some time to try to absorb that and visit with Public Works on it. I was just able to go through it today. I know that there are some developers in the audience too that would like to speak on this. I would request that the council would open it up for public hearing. And then allow us to digest this over the next two weeks to finalize it before presentation for vote.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I make a motion that we open this item up for public discussion.
Second. Second by Councilman Blood. Any further discussion? See none, please vote.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. I'm now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time.
Mayor Sanders, members of City Council. My name is Jerry Standford. I represent Sherwood Homes. We've been in Bellevue building houses for the past forty years. I'm also the current Chair of the Codes and Regulations Committee of the Metropolitan Omaha Builders Association. And Mr. Sullivan was correct. Mr. Follenkamp was part of the group that met with Mr. Sullivan, the mayor, several as the City Council after, quite honestly, we didn't appear at the last public hearing. It got completely biased at the, on the council agenda, so we were not there. When we did find out where this was, where the ordinance was going, what was proposed, we did seek a meeting and were granted that meeting. We did address the concerns, or Mr. Follenkamp did draw out, and we were concerned several things in the amendment or in the proposed ordinance about how the money is to be spent, who has the say that we were included in that. Several things that we didn't address, and we'd like you to really consider this going forward. We would hope that we'd have the chance to all sit down and meet again because there are more members than just the MOBA group that was here. They're affected by this. But a few things that we didn't address, address the master fee schedule. As your ordinance came forward, and the fees are charged based on the valuation of the building permits. The way the original ordinance was written, it was proposed at seventy-five percent. And that's a lot bigger number, and I brought several examples to that meeting of how other places in the metro area that have the ASAP fees calculate those fees. And had the same house, had you had ASAP fees in Bellevue at the time, if these other houses were calculated, you would have been considerably higher than everybody else. So I'd like you to kind of think about that and talk about that as we go forward. Another thing is it often seems that single-family residential housing is the low-hanging fruit out here when it comes to fees, charges. Maybe we don't have as big a lobby, maybe we don't make enough noise. But if you consider a three hundred thousand dollar house on the way the fees are proposed here, the ASAP fee would be two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. But when you take that against the five thousand dollars per acre for apartments, typically an apartment ground, you would have fifteen units per acre. And so the ASAP fee per apartment comes down to three hundred and thirty-three dollars approximately, based on that five thousand dollar fee. If ASAP fees are to be spent to help provide for funding for arterial streets, I really have a hard time seeing. And it's always been a question, how can you justify that twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars for a single-family house? When we take a look at the apartment, it's three hundred and thirty-three dollars. That young family with one or two kids in that apartment doesn't generate that kind of volume of traffic versus that single-family house. Also, when you think about that apartment being worth eighty to a hundred thousand dollars per unit versus the three hundred thousand dollar house, and these things don't go away tomorrow. After they're built, they continue to contribute and contribute to the tax base of the city. There seems to be a huge disparity there. A thousand dollars per acre is what you had talked about for industrial, industrial development ground. I can tell you that in our housing subdivisions, we don't bring those heavy trucks through there. We have heavy traffic one time, and that's during the four- to five-month period of the construction of the house. In the industrial, a thousand dollars per acre, what kind of wear and tear, what kind of streets are required, what kind of facilities are required to facilitate that? Bellevue's a little bit different than some of the other subdivisions or some of the other areas where there are arterial streets. Historically, if we think about the ground along Capeport Road that's been paved, if you think about Capeport South on Forty-Eighth Street, those streets provide access to a ton of potential development. So if we charged twenty-two hundred dollars per house along those streets, where does that money go? Think about some of the stuff that's there already. Several years ago, I went to the, a couple of years ago, I went to the Thirty-Sixth Street Proposed Improvement Plan. I don't recall seeing any method of funding that that included any arterial street improvement funding. Not to say that it shouldn't be used there, couldn't be used there, but when that's redone, that also provides for a huge amount of potential for housing. So I'd just like you to maybe step back. I think two weeks is a short amount of time, and I respect that you want to get this thing on the road, that you see that it's a great generator for you, but when you keep asking the development community to provide housing above entry-level houses, it gets to be a pretty big number, just in the ASAP fees here. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilman Blood?
I actually want to ask Jerry a question. So how, and I mean this sincerely, not in a smart alecky way. How would you compare those rates to, say, Papillion and Gretna?
To Papillion and Gretna. I know you're a little bit more just based on the way the houses are valued, the building permits are valued. And the point seven-five is a bigger number. I know that we were told that it was point seven-zero. It was going to be point seven-zero, but that's still, based on the valuation of the houses, it's a little more money.
So I'm not understanding. So what is the difference?
When we take a house for permits in Papillion, we're assigned, they tell us, they have a schedule that tells us how much the value of that house is based on square footage and several, and it's figured several different ways. And then the fee is applied. So if you use the same percentage clear across the board, if the house in Papillion is valued less, or the house in Gretna is valued less, then the fee that we pay for the ASAP fee will be less money out there. And that's currently, I took four houses that I built in the last twelve months. They're all exactly the same house. Omaha, Bellevue, Papillion, and Sarpy County. Based on your proposal, you would have had the highest fee on those four houses. Because I had the actual houses. Yes.
By how much?
Yeah, only maybe a few hundred dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. Jerry, when you had the meeting with the city, were there any commercial or industrial or multifamily builders or developers that were present at that meeting?
No, I don't believe there were. I think it was just when we found out about it at MOBA, I contacted several guys and the meeting was set up. And so mainly it was residential.
And how many single-family developers were there?
Myself, Danny, I think there were only two of us there. I think there were two developers there.
Okay. Mr. Berlitz, did we notify MOBA or any other building organizations in town of the decision to bring this ordinance forward?
Well, I'm going to have to defer to Jeff on that as it was developed. I think he gave the history of behind it and the process. So I'll defer to Jeff.
Well, I was involved with the committee that started well over two years ago, which included Sarpy County, La Vista, Papillion, Gretna, I think Springfield might have been in it. Some of those communities opted out of it, but we've been a part of that committee since then. Two years ago, Sarpy County enacted it. A year ago, Papillion, Gretna enacted it. Bellevue was always a part of that committee, so if the builders were, and if the builders knew that the other communities were, then they should have known Bellevue was also involved with it.
At the point of clarity, the meeting that we had last time, Jerry was representing MOBA at that meeting. So MOBA, how many, you got probably thirty, forty builders?
At MOBA, we have over sixty builder members.
And those are primarily single-family builders?
Yes.
So the AGC or any of those organizations were brought in to the discussion during our implementation of the proposed ordinance or the drafting of it?
No. I will comment again on where Mr. Roberts, as those ASAP fees were developed out of ASAP fees that were already started in Omaha and had already been vetted pretty heavily when Omaha developed those. And the Sarpy County, county and cities are really behind the curve and just catching up with that. I'd probably also ask Mr. Roberts, with respect to the fees, I believe that we have created factors to equalize those with the other districts, but I'd let him speak on that.
Well, part of the way the other communities do their fees, I'll speak specifically on, with Papillion, is they're still using two thousand and eight values. We update ours every six months, so we're current with what the evaluation is based on, you know, standard building practices. If you were to factor what we've done with our point seven to their point seven-five, if we decreased ours to point six-seven, we'd be of equal value. So that point zero-three percent is all the difference in between what we're doing. The other communities update theirs to get to the new standards, and their values would be higher than Bellevue's.
Mr. Berlitz.
Jeff, in relationship to the city of Omaha, though, there's, is different. You might explain kind of the apples and oranges.
Yeah, Omaha, they based theirs on sixty percent valuation. Then they also include other fees that they use to supplement with their ASAP. So it's not just, like what we're using, you know, point seven of the total evaluation. They're using whatever it is for just sixty percent of the valuation, which is why theirs is a lot lower.
So, Mr. Standford, I'm going to ask you a question. You bring a house in that's twenty-five hundred square feet into Bellevue. And really, I'm not going to ask you a question. I guess I'm going to make a statement. You pay a papio watershed fee of eight hundred and sixty-four dollars on that house. You pay a sewer connection fee of nine hundred dollars on that house. You pay a park fund of approximately a hundred and fifty, a hundred and thirty dollars on that house. Your building plumbing mechanical and electrical permits cumulatively will bring that total to forty-four hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. Now, with the ASAP fee, which you just brought up, and yours was a little bit higher in square footage, five hundred square feet, I think, so I'm just going to use your number, twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars. That means we're going to have a six thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollar fee before you turn a spade of soil in the dirt that ultimately the homeowner is going to pay for. Would that be a correct assessment?
That's correct.
I will reserve the rest of my comments for after the remainder of the speakers speak.
Are there others who'd like to speak at this time?
Melvin Sudeback, Melvin Sudeback Homes. I'm not in support of the ASAP fee. One of the problems we have is we seem to be getting fee left and right. I mean, it's hard enough with the increases we have every day in the industry. We get strapped with new fees all the time everywhere we go. In the last two years, we've planted four projects. All four of them have been outside of ASAP fee areas. Bellevue being one of them, our Spring Ridge project. Part of what we looked at is our fees, where can we be more competitive at. I think Bellevue stands to be unique and not having to do these fees. I think you become very attractive in the marketplace in the metro area. I think the more fees you add, the more you're going to line yourself up with the surrounding communities. And like I said, right now, I think you have a distinct advantage. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there others who'd like to? Thank you, Chris. If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the council? Mr. Carmichael?
Thank you, Mayor. I said this at the last meeting, and I'm going to say it again. I've heard this council and administration implore to the residents of our community that Bellevue was open for business. And the implementation of this ASAP fee, in my own mind, directly is a negative, has a negative connotation when we say we're open for business, but we're going to tax you to a point where we're taxing you the same as everybody else. I don't see that this fee, as it's presented to us today, is good for being open for business. We have a competitive advantage right now with other communities in Sarpy County and with Sarpy County in general. I would make a motion that we table this indefinitely and abide by what Mr. Sullivan said. I'd like to sit down with the developers. I'd like to sit down with commercial and industrial and multifamily developers and hear them. I don't want to just deal with single-family builders and produce an amendment to our master fee schedule for ASAP fees that don't do anything else but bring us up with the remainder of the communities. I don't think that's a fair assessment on how we should derive finances for the city. And I will leave it at that right now. Thank you.
So is that a motion, Mr. Carmichael?
It is a motion, yes.
We need a second.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Any discussion? Councilman Blood?
I don't disagree necessarily with anything that you're saying, but there's things that I definitely want us to ponder in addition to that. I know that Mr. Roberts has been working on this for two years. Sometimes I sit up here and I listen to other council members act like they've never heard that we've discussed any of this before. And we discussed this in strategic planning. In fact, if I remember correctly during strategic planning, it was in the group that was on your side of the room that discussed this and, I believe, casino, riverboat gambling as alternatives to pay for things because our budget is so constricted. So I'm a little stunned when people are taking such strong views when we've discussed these issues in the past. With that said, I don't disagree that it's a good idea to work with area builders. I'm hoping that Mr. Roberts is in on all of these meetings. And it was my understanding, having been on the council during that two-year period and listening to what staff has said to us, isn't there some sort of deadline attached to our commitment that we made with Sarpy County and these other communities as to when this is supposed to be accomplished? Was it at the end of April or something? No?
Mr. Roberts?
I have some date in my head.
No, there's no deadline for when we're going to do it. The way this ordinance was written, it was going to start April thirteenth.
That's what it was.
And then there was some stipulation on when property was actually purchased and how long they could go to have the fees waived if they issue a permit within a certain amount of time. I know one thing during the committee meetings, it was made pretty clear by even some of the county commissioners that was involved with it, that whatever community is not going to participate in ASAP will not receive any Sarpy County fees as a part of any kind of road improvements within Bellevue's ETJ. I don't know if they're going to hold to that, but that is just a conversation that was brought up with us. So I just want to let you guys know.
And fiscally, how would that, fiscally, how would that affect us?
Well, unless we partner with them and they use, you know, I don't know, general funds or whatever they want to do. It's not to say they wouldn't use ASAP, but when we go and approve, for instance, Twenty-Fifth Street from Cornhusker to Chandler or something like that, so we can accommodate all the housing that's being put in there, Sarpy County could come in and say, you know, we're not going to help you with it. That's your deal. But, yeah, I'm not going to say that they're not going to, but during all these committee meetings that we had, it was pretty strong to the communities that weren't going to participate, that they might be left out.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the situation that developers are in and continually seeing fees raised. And particularly with the volatile housing market, you don't know once you get it built, if it's a spec house, if you've got a buyer lined up already, you probably have it sold. But it can be a challenge in a fluctuating market. I also hear what our Public Works is having to deal with, and I know that good quality streets in Bellevue do invite people in. People like to live in Bellevue because the streets are repaired and the streets are plowed quickly, people can use them, and somebody has to pay for that. So if we don't change fees, then the money has to come from somewhere. I don't know where that's going to be. I don't think it's coming from police. It sure can't come from fire. Where do we get the funds, then? I know that since I've been on this council, at least three budgets have been balanced on the back of Public Works and streets projects that we just didn't do. We can't put those off as the state and federal government has done in a lot of the bridge and road infrastructure. So as sympathetic as I am to the builders, I'm in a quandary because I don't know where the money is going to come from to maintain what we have. And so I'm trying to get everybody to ride bicycles and put less wear on it. But we've got the quandary of how do we balance and pay for the streets. I don't have a good answer. I'm still trying to get a restaurant tax to pay for a fire department. So I'm open to suggestions if anybody has them.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think Councilman Carmichael kind of hit it on the head. You know, I've been in the real estate business for over forty-some years here in Bellevue, and I can tell you, in the last few years, I've seen very, very little development come into Bellevue. I see what happens in Papillion, and I see in Gretna, I see in Elkhorn. I look at the building permits, and one of the things, of course, we're caught with the river, river to our east and to the south. You know, basically run out of sewers, and you're in a different school district to the west, Papillion, and north is Omaha. But I do think that, I think there's a point by which a developer goes in, and the first thing they're looking at is the cost of land. And I think the land cost perhaps might be a little bit more attractive here in Bellevue than they are further out west. However, I think that as you go forward here, I think it'd be a great idea to kind of maybe hold a little bit and see what kind of advantage we can get to get some more development. And it sounds great to talk about the fees you're going to get, but if you don't have anybody building, you're not going to get any fee. So it might give us an advantage for a while to at least meet a little bit more with some of the home builders and also the developers that do commercial, maybe apartments and things like that. So I'm supportive to just table this for a while and get a little bit more input from MOBA. And also, there's another organization too, Home Builders and MOBA, two organizations, right, Jerry? Is there two? Yeah. So, and there's a lot of builders out there that I think are in there, but these folks sitting out here are the ones that have actually invested in Bellevue and built in Bellevue. There's a lot out there that have not, so.
Mr. Sullivan.
I just have a procedural issue. If we table it indefinitely, I'm not sure how that item comes back to the agenda. And it seems to me that there's some discussion about having some additional meetings, that it would probably make more sense to table it to a date certain. And if it has to be tabled longer, then to table it longer. Otherwise, to table it indefinitely, you might as well just vote to vote it down.
You do your, or add a date to your motion?
I'm contemplating that, Mayor. I would amend my motion to table to the January eleventh meeting. That would give us ninety days or so. July eleventh. January eleventh, okay. July eleventh, two thousand sixteen.
I'll second that amendment.
So July eleventh, two thousand sixteen.
Yes, ma'am.
And a second from Mr. Hanson. Any discussion? Councilman Blood?
Again, I have no issue putting this off, but that's a big window of time. Is that going to affect your department at all, Jeff? I'm sorry to keep throwing you under the bus here, but, I mean, I just think after two years, it just seems like we're not putting any faith in our employees, and that bothers me. I think ninety days is too long. I don't know why thirty days isn't enough time for them to meet with the builders and it's not like we're reinventing the will.
Well, I'm just, you know, the longer you hold it off, the more permits gets issued, the less money comes into the city, so.
The more vegetarian issues we have.
It's not my end-all to see how much money we can bring in here, but, you know, it's just one of the consequences is losing out on the revenue that is out there at that time.
Mayor, if in fact we can come to some resolution before July eleventh, I have no problem bringing this back before the council. But that's the date I've chosen, so it's the date I'll stand on.
We're voting on the motion to amend first.
To July eleventh. So we're voting on the motion, so we have a first, a motion and a second. So we need to vote on the motion to amend for July eleventh. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Procedurally, I'm just wondering, can we bring this back before the ninety days? As was suggested, if things are worked out, when we put in the motion that it's at a date certain?
No.
So we have no option to do that, then?
It would be scheduled for the July eleventh meeting.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So right now, you're just voting on the motion to amend the tabling of it to a date certain, which is July eleventh? You're just voting on the motion to amend the tabling July eleventh?
Please vote.
Vote is four to two.
Now we need to vote on? The motion as amended. Please vote.
Vote is five to one.
Thank you. Onto item number eight, ordinance for public hearing, second reading. Eight A, ordinance three eight four six. Please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number three eight four six. An ordinance to amend Section five point one seven, ordinance number three six one nine, Bellevue zoning ordinance relating to planned subdivisions. To repeal such section as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. I'm now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none. I'll close the public hearing. The next meeting, April eleventh, is the final reading. Item number nine, ordinance for induction, first reading, none. Ten, public hearing on matters other than ordinance, none. Eleven, resolution, eleven A, resolution number twenty- Eleven, resolution, eleven A, resolution number twenty sixteen dash eleven, amending the master fee schedule to reflect the changes in the Papio Creek watershed partnership fees through two thousand and eighteen, to remove the fee for offense permit and for correction to the sewer connection fees.
Do we need to make a correction on the sewer connection fees?
I think that the first step would just make a motion to approve the resolution two thousand and sixteen eleven, and then if there's any changes you wanna make, we can do an amendment from there.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve resolution number two thousand and sixteen dash eleven, amending the master fee schedule.
Second. Second by Councilman Blood, any discussion? Mr. Cook.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. I think we need to make an amendment of what we actually have on, attached to our agenda, and I'm gonna ask you for some help. Under sewer connection fees for dupe, for multi, for multifamily, we need, that's seven hundred per unit, okay? And then on the commercial industrial, I believe the motion that I made last week said the thirty-nine hundred per acre a minimum, and then I put in there seventeen fifty based on the building footprint, and what we got attached to our agenda today was nineteen fifty, two hundred dollar difference.
Who do you want, Mr. Severson?
Sorry, go ahead.
Sabrina, please.
It was brought to my attention through Public Works and the permits inspections that per section twelve, or no, excuse me, twenty-seven dash seventy-three of the city code, it says that the minimum amount is supposed to be half, and that's why the change was made. That's, I have that written under the background.
Twenty-seven dash seventy-three?
Yes.
So by ordinance or required?
By city, by code. It says that it should be half.
Okay, so I'd have to make an amendment to change that to, from seventeen fifty to nineteen fifty?
I'm trying to find where you're at on it.
Okay. I made the motion of that number seventeen fifty last Friday. Is there a saying, this, this one has to be half of this?
Thank God he's got an updated code book.
This one's pretty updated. Listen, one-half the amount that's described as a master fee, must be one-half. Why does that not show up on my system here? It's on your sewer connection, right?
So I'm gonna make a motion, and my motion will be, and this is just for clarification, on multifamily, it's seven hundred per unit, and on commercial industrial, because of section twenty-seven dash seventy-three of the city code, it says the minimum amount for the commercial industrial fees is to be half of what the full amount is set by the master fee schedule. And since that is being set at thirty-nine hundred, the minimum, which has to be half, is nineteen fifty, so for commercial industrial, thirty-nine hundred an acre, acre, minimum of nineteen fifty based on the building footprint, is my motion.
I'll second.
Did we originally have a motion for the resolution? So this is amended? Okay.
Are, are we all good on that?
Are we talking to Rich Severson?
Rich or anybody that's?
Tiffany, could you help us?
Tiffany?
Oh, I didn't see Tiffany back there.
I, I don't understand why you need the amendment, 'cause that's what it says. That's what it's been changed to, so why are you asking for an amendment?
She put it in there as, as he explained it.
The half.
Yeah, so I don't know.
What you're asking as the final is the first time we're seeing this resolution, correct?
Yes.
Okay, then we don't need an amendment.
Because of the half, yeah.
Because the half that's in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It was, it was convoluted from the beginning, I know. We thought the master fee could be amended without any ordinance changes, but.
To the extent that that's different, you're gonna be approving the resolution as it's presented, so we don't need to change it.
It'll conform with the code.
But it was good for explanation purposes.
Thank you. So we had a, a motion and a second, and we had discussion, so we can just go ahead and vote? Call the vote. Please vote. Thanks, Epiphany.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Item twelve, current business, twelve A is under consent, twelve B, accepting the low price quote from Jamco Abatement Service, Inc., in the amount of four thousand eight hundred fifty for asbestos abatement at one-two-eight-one-four South Ninth Street to be paid from the Community Betterment Fund. Councilman Blood.
Motion to approve the low price quote from Jamco Abatement Services in the amount of four thousand eight hundred fifty dollars for asbestos, asbestos abatement at one-two-eight-one-four South Ninth to be paid from the Community Betterment Fund.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Twelve C, accepting the low proposal from Polonic Construction in the amount of fifty-three thousand for the demolition of one-two-eight-one-four South Ninth Street to be paid from the Community Betterment Fund. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve accepting the low proposal from Polonic Construction in the amount of fifty-three thousand dollars for the demolition of one-twenty-eight-fourteen South Ninth Street to be paid from the Community Betterment Fund.
Second.
Second by Ms., Ms. Blood. Any questions, discussion? See none, please vote.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Item twelve D, approval of the Kawasaki User Relations Loan Agreement with Kawasaki Motors Corp. and Dillon Motorsports for the fire department's use of a loner vehicle, utility vehicle. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Twelve E, approval of the Kawasaki Users Relations Loan Agreement with Kawasaki Motors Corp. and Dillon Motorsports for the police department, the use of a loner utility vehicle. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Twelve F, approval of lease extension number five for seven-two-six for Crook Road North in the amount of one thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars per month. Twelve F. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the lease extension number five for one thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars per month.
Second.
Second by Councilman Blood. Discussion, questions? See, Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. In, in the lease extension, it says that the, the base rent will be increased to fourteen thousand per year, and then it says be paid in monthly payments of eleven-seventy-five per month. Fourteen thousand per year would come out to be one thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents per month, not eleven-seventy-five, is there?
Do you know? The six dollars? Do you know?
Could be. I don't know, it might be. The old, the old lease agreement, it came out exact to what the full amount was per year, so that's why I'm asking with the new one. Okay.
I'd just go ahead and approve it at the fourteen thousand a month and request that it be changed to eleven-sixty-seven or whatever the number was.
Whatever the appropriate amount will be. A year.
A year.
Yeah.
So do we need that added to the motion?
Do we need a amendment, then? It's in the motion?
Or just, just add that to?
Somebody wants to, whoever made the motion to just, with the correction of the amount per month?
Do it for the year instead of the month.
Who made the motion?
I'll make the correction to the motion that it's fourteen thousand for the year.
And I'll second again. We still have the second. Any more discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Twelve G, approval of lease of a vehicle for the DEA Task Force at a, at a cost of no more than six hundred and fifty per month. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve, or approval of the lease of the vehicle for the DEA Task Force officer at a cost of no more than six fifty per month.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Twelve H, authorize the release of an RFI for open data portal vendors for a period of thirty days, starting on April the fourth. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Twelve I, approving the low responsible bid from Alexander Lawn and Landscape in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and ten cents for the right-of-way mowing of project, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve this low responsible bid from Alexander Lawn and Landscape in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and ten cents for the right-of-way mowing project, and to authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Discussion or questions? Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. Little clarification on this, these right-of-way areas are, are they owned by the city or various sources, or?
Mr. Roberts.
It's all city property.
Okay. Is there any, I know with, with some other adjacent properties and such, there's some requirements for landowners to, to maintain. Are there any of those types of things that would occur with any of these right-of-way areas?
There's potentially a couple areas we're gonna relook at.
'Cause there are some, some small parcels in here, I see, you know, two-tenths, three-tenths, half-acre kind of areas.
Yeah, some of these have, have obstacles, like a retaining wall or a fence, things like that, which makes it hard for the, the way the ordinance is written, for that property owner to maintain that portion of the right-of-way. But we are looking at some of the areas, the way this contract is written, it's based on acres.
Right.
The dollar value per acre, so we can add acres, we can take away acres. Contract is well aware of this, that there could be some adjustments during the year, so.
Okay, so if we?
If we deem something needs to come out, we'll take it out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question, discussion? See none, please vote.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Twelve J, authorize the mayor to sign the preliminary engineering service agreement, supplement number five, between the City of Bellevue and Olson Associates, Inc., in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign this preliminary engineering services agreement, supplement number five, between the City of Bellevue and Olson Associates, in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Twelve K, request the approval of change order for the Rayner Parkway Conference Center in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to, to approve the request of the change orders for the Rayner Parkway Conference Center in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Mr. Preister. No? Do we have a second? Mr. Hanson.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Hanson. Discussion? Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I appreciate that in this agreement, that the chandelier was taken out and saving us quite a bit of money, but I'm concerned about the amount we're doing, not so much, I think it's the electrical, that was that basically for wiring, for electronic equipment, or why such a huge increase? And I apologize for not asking this sooner.
I've got a rep from Kinseth and Dykon here, so they'll come up and answer your questions.
Good, thank you. I'm glad I didn't waste their trip.
Welcome.
Randy Traven, Kinseth Hospitality Corporation. To answer your question regards to the, I believe it was for the dimming system, is that, is that what you were looking for, Mr. Preister?
I was looking at the increased cost for electrical service, and there was an increase, I believe, for the plumbing service, and a reduction for removal, sixty-some thousand for taking out a chandelier. So we've got some removal costs, which would offset the increases, which originally I hoped would happen, if we're gonna add something, we take something away, so we stick with the original bid.
Correct. Through the course of the design of the project, you know, there was things that were taken out and added, value engineering, trying to get the project in budget. One of the things that was taken out and inadvertently not put back in was the dimming system. And that dimming system is very expensive. And from the hospitality, and which Kinseth Hospital be the manager of that property, if you have a, a meeting manager coming in to try and sell them that property, at what was in the system at the time the contracts were let, was basically a rheostat dimming system in each one of those rooms. So you'd have five dimming systems in five separate meeting rooms. Well, if you open that whole conference room up, and you wanna use the whole thing to dim the lights, to do whatever you have to do, you'd have to go around to five or six different stations to get them all right. That would turn people off. So that's why we had, you know, to make the project feasible and to attractive to other, to, to, to large groups, that's why that was added back in. It was not supposed to be taken out in the first place, but it did. There were some miscommunications between the design team and the ownership group, and that's what happened. The other things, there were some things, there was a lot of things that were driven by Marriott. Since Marriott has the hotel, they do have design standards that they wanna flow through into the, into the conference center, to make everything consistent with their, with their standards. So we had several sub-costs there that were involved. So we had several sub-costs there that were involved. The plumbing, there you are. Clayton Walkle, he's with Daikon. I'm trying to think what the plumbing issues were.
The plumbing was probably related to the structure, the building structure, so it's kind of a design issue that we had to reroute drains to avoid the structure in the walls. So is one of those things picked up during construction?
There was, there was structure that was in the way of bringing pipes down through the walls and the ceiling, didn't allow, you know, it was unforeseen. And then once it got constructed, things were happening, said, well, this isn't going to work, so they had to do some rerouting. Also, I've been in the construction business for many, many years, and change orders and changes through the course of construction is inevitable. Not an architect or an engineer out there that hasn't had a change order on a construction project. And those are some of the things. There's nothing, I don't believe, that was unwarranted. Everything was in the interest of the project to make the project feasible and functional.
Okay, so you're saying the electrical, which is the bulk of it. The other things would largely be offset by the removal of the chandelier, which I appreciate. So the dimmer is what you're saying? It was originally in the plans, got taken out, and then essentially because of the need to have uniformity in all of the individual rooms, it was put back in? And all of those electrical costs are basically for those various dimmers?
Well, that was an alliance share of it. There was some costs involved, I believe, with rooftop units that the design team didn't have to design quite right, that were changed, that were caught by the electricians and the manufacturers reps when they start putting everything together for, through the approval process. There might have been a couple of other things like that, but the design load on that dimming system was substantial.
Okay. And I appreciate that when you're doing a project, things come up and you need to adjust, so I did want to understand that. The other thing is, do you foresee at this stage where we're getting close to completion, any additional change orders, or is this what you anticipate to be the one and only?
You think we're pretty close to?
I think we've got everything submitted.
Yeah, I think everything's, I think Jeff has pretty much everything. I don't anticipate anything, but that doesn't mean that I can't blow my foot off.
Never say never.
Never say never. But I think we're in pretty good shape, because we are about, at about seventy-five percent completion, I would think.
Okay.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I had the same questions, and I appreciate change orders do happen, and there's never a perfect project. I guess it was just the magnitude of that electrical change order. After taking out the chandelier, it was about thirty-two point eight percent of the remaining electrical balance, and so that was really significant.
Yeah, there's, that, and also I think there was probably some costs on the patio and OPPD. That's some of your fees you guys were talking about earlier.
Councilwoman Blood.
Actually, my question's for administration. For me, and not with just today's agenda item, but future agenda items, is there some reason that we can't get a better explanation of what the change orders are as opposed to just electrical plumbing? You know, I look back at projects that have, I've had concerns about where we've accepted, and this is not your bid that we're talking about, where we've had low bids that we've accepted, and then they come back with these massive change orders. And to me, that, I almost feel like we're being slighted sometimes, and it would help me make better decisions if I knew when I got my packet what it means.
Mr. Roberts, would you like to answer that?
Yeah, I was going to defer to Jeff. He can explain the process.
Two different things here. One thing I want to mention is, we have about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand contingency so we're well within that contingency line item that we have. This book that Mr. Traving has up here, Steve asked me the same thing to get some documentation. I explained to him that I'd be printing off volumes and volumes of information. The three of us spent several hours together going over all this, explaining everything that went on, justifying why it was. The reason you don't have that is because I didn't think you really wanted this big package of books.
No, and I agree with you, but a synopsis, like, he just gave me a synopsis that was basically not even a paragraph, so something like that would be really helpful to me, basically saying it was?
Yeah, we can do that next time if it gives something a little more, more detailed but less volume.
Yeah, I don't expect you to, you have enough work on your plate. I would never expect something like that, but a synopsis makes it easier for us to make the decisions.
Sure.
So, and again, I'm not questioning that I think something was done wrong, or that you guys are trying to pull something over on us.
Oh, certainly.
It's just a point right now in procedure that I have opportunity to talk to administration about since it's on our agenda.
Mr. Burlowitz.
And one thing I can assure you, and Jeff can speak to it as well as Rich, all the billings are very highly scrutinized before anything's paid, to make sure it's in line with the project. And change orders do occur. In my career with major projects, it's inevitable. Sometimes it's due to things get left out, sometimes things just don't come together quite as expected, but we do highly scrutinize those, but we'll try to see if we can put this together at least, kind of like a synopsis of what the changes may be. Hopefully we won't have any more, but then as indicated, until we get totally to the finish line, we won't know for sure.
Well, again, I'm not questioning that you guys don't scrutinize it. We're the legislative body, and if we approve a large amount of money, I need to be able to say what it's for.
No, definitely. I, no disagreement with that.
Are there any other questions from the council? See none, thank you.
Could you sign in, please?
Please. I don't think we had a motion yet. Did we have a? Sabrina, did we have a motion?
By Mr. Carmichael, then second by Mr. Hanson.
Thank you. So any more discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item thirteen, city administrator's report. Comments must be limited to the items on the current city administrator's report. Are there any questions for Mr. Burlowitz?
As usual, staff and I will attempt to answer any questions if possible.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. It was good. I appreciate the report. The one question that came up for me was, under the risk management and safety report, the last one said, "Met with administration and legal regarding sewer backup and affected residents." I just want to underscore, this is what I brought up when we were looking at sewer connection fees. In the budget, we already have a situation where our fees are not sustainable, and we are having to subsidize those to a tune of about three hundred, I think it was three hundred thousand a year. So as we're getting farther behind, and we see that we have an old system that has problems, we are already dealing with sewer backup in some areas. I would not want to be one of those homeowners dealing with it, and I can understand why they're looking for a settlement. So my point is, here's another example, the budget is another example, and we need to find a solution, because that's not fair to the homeowners. We've got a system that has to pay for itself, we keep trying to take money away from things, and yet we're not bringing money in to pay the legitimate costs of the city. So anybody that doesn't want to do these things, I think we have a responsibility to come up with an alternative. Comment more than anything else.
That's okay.
It's right there in the administrator's report, and I think it's good that it is. I feel sorry for those people.
The only comment I'd make is that meeting was just to review the recent backup situation and to be able to then, as council's been informed as to the position we've had to take, but yeah, it's an ongoing challenge.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you. I have one thing up front in the summary. You give up front under the Old Town Redevelopment area. You talk about packets going out in the city, then receiving packets back, redevelopment. You have received packets through Friday, February thirteen seventy-seven, two thousand sixteen. So I'm wondering, what date is that, that we are receiving packets back?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's a misprint, yeah. I never bragged about being great at keyboarding or proofreading. No, it's April thirteenth.
April thirteenth.
I'm glad you caught that.
Thank you.
Bellcheck didn't.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions, comments? Moving on to item number fourteen, public request to be heard. Any member of the public addressed in the council shall abide by council policy resolution thirty-five regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states, "Any statements made during the city council meeting by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials and employees, or members of the general public shall not involve impertinent or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual so attacked is an elected official, a city official, or an employer or member of the general public." And section, city code section two dash six eight regarding the manner of addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes.
Good evening. Chuck Frederick, one five one one Madison Street. Last meeting, I talked about how it'd be great to have a sign up there, some rules at the Jewel Park, and lo and behold, the next day I went there, there was a sign. Unfortunately, it was, that's been here, I thought it was a brand-new sign, but it's been here a long time. I just hadn't noticed it before, so I guess I was too busy trying to get my dog in the park and not looking at the sign, but there is rules there, and I'm glad to have that there. They're doing a great job down there. Last meeting also, I talked about, asked about getting a copy of all the studies that had been done, how much we paid for them, the date we paid for them, and what the results have been. I think that's something that we all would like to know, and I know I had to ask about seven times for a list of the committee members, so hopefully I can get this sooner than asking seven times. The other thing was that when I spoke last meeting too, one of the council people were able to speak after me because it was not, there was something on the agenda. That was something that never happened before, I don't think, but Mr. Sullivan read the ordinance or the statute on that, and my only question is this, that if I do talk about something on the agenda, I guess for Mr. Sullivan, and that person, somebody from the council responds to me, can I respond back on that? Is there a ruling on that?
Your question's not on the agenda.
Say what? I didn't understand it.
Your question was not on the agenda.
Well, I'm asking, all I'm asking is that if somebody responds to me when I have something on the agenda, I'm not talking about this time, I'm talking about the last meeting, but if they respond to me, can I sit here, wait, and respond back to them? That's my question. I just want to know, I just want to know if that's possible or not. Because maybe the person who responds to me gives misinformation, and I'd like to be able to correct that.
I'm not going to answer your question, other than to say you're given an opportunity to speak, and that is what you've been afforded.
Well, then I would just assume that I can speak, respond to anybody who responds to me if I talk about something on the agenda. Thank you very much.
I've never done this before, so I signed it first.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Do I give my home address or the home that I am, my rental home that I had up for sale's address that I'm speaking about? You can't tell me. I want to know what I wrote in here.
Well, I can answer that. It's her home address, correct? As a citizen?
Well, both of them are my homes. I have one up for sale, and that's the one I'm?
I don't know that we require the address anyway.
Okay. Well, it says address here.
Go ahead, just sign in if you would, please.
Thank you. I'm Gloria Mosser, and I thought there'd be more than me, but we were told that maybe we can't do this. And I didn't realize on agenda, and I didn't pick up the one that you were talking about, the mayor's report on all of the homes that are damaged on Hancock, and mine was one of them. I have never been contacted about it. I, my house is twenty-five oh seven. I just put it up for rent, I mean, excuse me, for sale. It's been for rent. I just spent three thousand dollars to do the upstairs where my last renters put up because I'm wanting to get out of the rental business. I did it when my husband was at Bellevue University, and we did it with athletes that didn't have homes to be in, and so we rented it then. And I went on on Sunday and put new curtains in, and I went back on Saturday, and no one had ever told me anything happened on February twenty-ninth, when the city lines broke and the sewage came through all the houses. And when I walked in, after I spent three thousand dollars to get the smell of my house from the smokers, it was devastating. And so I called my friend that's a plumber, and he said something must have happened to a sewage line, and I walked downstairs, and I was in raw sewage, three inches deep in my basement. So that's what I'm wondering. I still had not been contacted by the city. I had called on Saturday, I called on Monday, I finally called JD Jennings on Tuesday and said, "What's this?" I called Public Works, I called three or four other ones, and she told me what happened. I still have not been contacted from anybody in the city. There's not been a note put on my door or anything. The contractor, Jars Gerhart, that I guessed from Columbia Insurance's views, three or four of the other residents have gotten letters. I have not seen, they are not responsible for this. Josh Gerhart, who was the contracted contractor, because he went into one of the houses that morning that it happened, and he went door-to-door, but he didn't get mine, and they weren't even aware that mine was on a list that was damaged. And he called me himself and said that he'd pay for any cleanup damage, which right now was over six thousand dollars. They are now in there because they had to wait for a ten-day period because I have asbestos tiles that were cracked, and they are now in there today through this week doing that. So my house is up for sale, I'm losing over nine hundred dollars a month, and they can't even get in there for someone to show the house. They're supposed to be done with the asbestos. My contract to have it repaired and restored, I have no walls in my basement anymore, is over twelve thousand dollars. And so I cannot sell this house, I cannot afford, because I'm retired and my husband's retired, to give twelve thousand dollars, and I'm just wondering what we can do, and I see that there, I never knew there was a community betterment, I guess I need to come and find out these things program that's got one point three million, and if they can do for, you know, low-income housing and everything, I don't see why they can't help us, twelve or more residents that are having problems. I went door-to-door from four houses up from me, all the way to the bottom of the hill on Sunday. The four houses passed where the sewage was at. They are having sewage problems. They called the city, and they said, "Well, we'll see what's happening." They're having drainage problems, and when they do the bathtubs or the showers, nothing can happen, so I'm supposed, it takes a day or two to drain those places, and I'm sure there's damage there too. It just hasn't come up through their sewers like mine did, and I was the last house coming up north that was affected. So I just want to know what myself, three or four people are trying to get lawyers, what we need to do as a neighborhood to clean up that mess and do something so these people that are eighty, ninety years old, besides myself, that's retired, almost all the people down in those blocks, can do something to restore their houses. Thank you. And I have somebody else too.
Not something that we can really address at public records, but I'll give you my card, and you can call me tomorrow, and we can discuss.
And I know some of the council was unaware that this even has happened, and that is affecting a lot of people. And I've been a resident of Bellevue for forty years, and I just can't believe nothing's being done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please forgive me if I repeat, my battery on this side of my hearing aid went, I couldn't hear everything she said. So excuse me if I repeat. My name is Bill Vance, and I live at what's left of twenty-five twenty-one Hancock. We're looking at ten thousand seven hundred estimate, just to? at what's left of 2521 Hancock. We're looking at 10,700 estimate, just to restore the basement to what it was. 4,000 cleanup, about 15,000 furniture, everything's gone, destroyed. I was doing my bank account at the computer about nine o'clock in the morning, 29th of February, and all of a sudden my house lepers were wet, with water and feces everywhere. And we still have it. We still have some of that. And I went to get a claim form, and I was told by the city employee, "We don't use them. We don't have a claim form." I thought I had a right to file a claim. And then I was told, "I'm not going to say anything, do anything till the lawsuit starts." They got the wish as of today, they started. So I just want to notify everybody. Mr. Carmichael, I spoke to briefly, thank you. No one else has called me back from the city. 30 days. There's roughly 12 of us, Gloria and I, that's why I'm dressed this way, spur of the moment, they asked us to come up. My neighbor's 90, his wife's 86, she's blind. They were sitting down watching TV, and all of a sudden, they're sitting in all this feces and everything. Didn't even know it. And they can't even get out and come up here, so we're here. I thank you for listening to me. I hope somebody checks into the person that could have filed the claim that Wednesday, two days later, with travelers, and subrogated it, K M U D and, and Gearhart, and we could have been fixed. I've got a wife that had three major surgeries in five months. They've, they've totally taken everything away. I was raised down here in the bottoms, never seen Bellevue turn on the citizens like they have here. Nobody, except Mr. Carmichael's the only one that I've contacted, that I spoke to. I hope everybody will try and at least put some compassion back, unless you're talking mostly seniors. So we probably won't be around that long. But I thank you for your time, and I just, the only question I had, maybe somebody could tell me one day, is why I don't have a right to get a claim form from the City of Bellevue and file my own claim, which I haven't been able to do, so my attorney's doing it now. So thank you, sir, and ma'am.
Are there others that would like to speak? If not, I'll go ahead and close the Public Request to Be Heard. Item number 15, Executive Session, None. Item number 16, Adjournment. Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Next meeting is Monday, April the 11th.